We stand for the pleasurable allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What about Roehl Hall?
Gerald Trueheart.
Present.
Denise Johnson.
Present.
Jeanne Buie.
Present.
Addie Daniels Lane, absent.
No, present.
Present. Austin Edwards.
Present.
Yolanda Lopez.
Present.
Sasa Montanya.
Present.
Larry Trailer. Jeannie Weakland.
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right, we have a quorum. New Jersey sunshine laws. The New Jersey public meetings law was enacted to ensure the rights to the public to have advance notice of and attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted on. On the rules of this act, the Trenton Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting by publicizing the date, time, and place thereof posted in the website, the Times, as well as the Star-Ledger. Formal action will take place at this meeting. Our mission statement, "All students will graduate with a vision for the future motivated to learn continually and prepared to succeed in their choice of college or career." We will have an adoption of the agenda, but we do have a few addendum items for our agenda tonight. The first one is our policy 511A, access to education. I would like this to be approved tonight if the board would allow that approval tonight. On the first reading, this is involving immigration enforcement in our relationship with our overall community. So I would like to have that particular policy approved tonight in its entirety and not waiting for a second reading. Our finance agenda, resolution to approve the Garvey School as a performance, a school educational and cultural program for the Garvey program. Also, we have an addendum on the agenda tonight, a resolution 0227-17-1 affirming the commitment to educating all students. I'm going to read this entire resolution tonight into the record as discussed with my colleagues. Whereas it is the right of every child regardless of immigration status to access a free and public K-12 education, and the district welcomes and supports all students. Whereas the district has responsibility to ensure that all students who reside within its borders, boundaries, regardless of immigration status, can safely access a free and public K-12 education. Whereas if federal immigration law enforcement activities on or around the district property and transportation routes, whether by surveillance, interview, demand for information, arrest, detention, or any other means harmfully disrupt the learning environments to which all students regardless of immigration status are entitled and significantly interfere with the ability of all students, including U.S. citizens, students, and students who hold other legal grounds for presence in the U.S. to access a free, public K-12 education. Whereas through its policies and practices, the district has made a commitment to equality education for all students, which includes a safe and stable learning environment, means of transportation to and from sites, the preservation of classroom hours for educational instruction, and the requirement of school attendance. Whereas the parents and students have expressed to the district fear and confusion about continuing physical and emotional safety of all students and the right to access a free public K-12 education through district schools and programs. And whereas educational personnel are often a primary source of support, resources, and information to assist and support students and student learning, which includes their emotional health. Now therefore be resolved that U.S. Immigration Enforcement Office ICE, state or local law enforcement agencies acting on behalf of ICE, or agents or officers of any federal, state, or local agency attempting to enforce federal immigration laws are to follow district policy 511A. Attached to and incorporated in this resolution to ensure the district meets as duly to provide all students regardless of immigration status access to a free and public education. Now therefore be it resolved that the board declares the district a safe zone for students, meaning that the district is in place for students to learn, to thrive, and to seek assistance, information, and support related to any immigration law enforcement that interferes with their learning experience. Be it therefore resolved, the district shall within 30 days of the date of the resolution create a rapid response team to prepare in the event of any minor child attending school in the district is deprived of adult care, supervision, or guardianship outside of school due to a federal law enforcement actions such as detention by ICE or cooperating law enforcement agencies. Be it therefore resolved, the district will provide professional development for faculty, staff, and administrators to ensure schools are safe, having for students, and learn about the resources available to undocumented and other immigrant students. Be it further resolved, it continues to be the policy of this district not to allow any individual organization to enter a school site if the educational setting would be disruptive by that visit, given the likelihood of substantial disruption posed by the presence of ICE or state or local law enforcement agencies acting for ICE. Any request by ICE or other agencies to visit a school site should be presented to the superintendent's office for review as to whether access to the site is permitted by law, a judicial warrant is required, or any other legal consideration apply. This review should be made expeditsiously, but before any immigration law enforcement agent or officer appears at a school site. Be it therefore resolved, be it further resolved, and a continued commitment to the protection of student privacy, the district shall review its record-keeping policies and practices to ensure that no data is being collected with respect to students' immigration status or place of birth, and cease any such collection as irrelevant to any educational enterprise and potentially discriminatory. Be it further resolved, should ICE or any other immigration law enforcement agents request any student information, that request should be referred to the superintendent's office to ensure compliance with Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, student constitutional privacy, students for judicial warrant, and any other limitation on disclosure. This review should be conducted expeditsiously, but before any production of information is made. Be it further resolved, the district shall post this resolution at every school site and distribute it to district staff, students, and parents using usual means of communication, and the resolution will be translated into all languages spoken by our students at home. Be it further resolved, the superintendent shall report back on compliance with the resolution to the board at its next meeting. Be it further resolved, the board directs superintendent to review district policy and practices regarding bullying, report back to the board at its next meeting, and communicate to staff, students, and parents the importance of maintaining a bully-free environment for all students. Be it further resolved, the board affirms that certified district employees have the academic freedom to discuss this resolution during class time provided it is age-appropriate, and students are to be made aware that district councils are available to discuss the subject containing in this resolution. And be it further resolved, after-school providers and other vendors or service providers who contract with the district shall be notified of this resolution within 30 days and required to abide by it. That concludes our resolution 0227-17-1 affirming the commitment to education of all students in reference to our policy 511A. That concludes our addendums to the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda as proposed with amendments.
So moved.
Second.
So properly moved and seconded. Roehl Hall?
Gerald Trueheart.
Yes.
Denise Johnson.
Yes.
Jeanne Buie.
Yes.
Addie Daniels Lane.
Yes.
Austin Edwards.
Yes.
Yolanda Lopez.
Yes.
Sasa Montanya.
Yes.
Larry Trailer.
Yes.
Jeannie Weakland.
Yes.
Motion passed with amendments.
Well, now have our superintendent's remarks.
May I just ask a question before?
A question to the motion?
No, no, yes, related to the motion. Would it be possible to please have this translated into Spanish, into French, into all the languages that are possible that are represented in our school district and gotten out to parents and posted? And just as a, that might make it easier, this is judicial language. I mean, it's difficult, I think, maybe for some families to understand. If there could be just also a synopsis that basically tells them that their children are safe while they are in school, it would be great.
Yeah, the policy, the resolution speaks to that as well, and the superintendent will certainly follow those instructions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I was about to say good morning, but good evening. Monday on board meetings are like that. It's a long event. And thank you. So just a few comments, and then we'll have a presentation. I just wanted to follow up on much of what Mr. Trueheart shared a few minutes ago and talk about practically how we're attempting to apply this. I say that knowing that similar to COVID, when that came our way, this is new in the way that we are hearing about enforcement, in particularly potentially our city. So we feel like we're headed in the right direction, attempting to get information out to families. I'll always say that we will distribute factual and legal information. I don't pass-on-post, I ask that you not pass-on-post text and information that hasn't been investigated because that creates anxiety. And we hear those. We heard one recently today about something at Sovereign Bank Arena. And so we know, we try to investigate to make sure because we want to pass as much information to our people. So we appreciate the information. If you can send that to us, we will address those issues and try to get information out to our staff and our families that's factual and legal. We certainly don't want anyone to have illegal information. So just a couple of quick comments. The district understands enforcement of immigration policies have created fear and anxiety for our families and for our staff and for the people who work in this district or around this city. And we hear it, and you can feel it. It's a heavy weight. And so we're all dealing with it. We also understand that parents and guardians may ask our teachers and school staff questions about district immigration policies, about federal immigration policies. So what we ask is when this happens, for all of our staff, direct those concerns and questions to principals, vice principals, and district administrators. Not that we don't trust, we don't want you to have to negotiate information. We want to give you, I sent information out to principals, I sent information out to the board, sending good information out that comes from board policy and from the state that you can share with families. So I sent that information out as recently as today, and we're working on making sure that the information is factual. We have also received, as I said, numerous posts from social media, along with texts, emails, and information about immigration issues in the city. And we've investigated, to the best of our knowledge, each report. And at this time, we haven't confirmed these reports, and we will only again communicate factual and legal information. Why do I continue to say that? Because I'll be asked as superintendent, and I was speaking with multiple superintendents about the need to communicate information. We believe you communicate information that's important to your people appropriately, not just it happened and you don't know. I need to know that it's factual. So if you send it, I'm going to ask you 10 questions about it to make sure we can get it right. So I do want to support the information that comes in and make sure we get it out to staff and parents. It is critical that we share the most accurate and up-to-date information with our families. Again, we ask you not to forward posts, texts, and emails that aren't not grounded in fact. Not that you heard it, it's that you know it. You saw it, you witnessed it. So then I have a sense of that we can investigate further and get this information out to you. As Mr. Trueheart mentioned, Trenton Public School District is guided by policy 5111A, which outlines procedures schools and district staff should follow when managing access to education, student privacy, and immigration enforcement. All principals and vice principals and district officials have spent nearly three hours training recently just so we could get up to date. It's not new policy. This policy and this resolution has been around for eight years. I think what we're forced to do now is know our business. The good thing about this, if there's a silver lining for us, is we've been practicing. You don't enter schools anyway without some level of documentation and many, many questions. And what we are doing is just reaffirming that we know how to follow this process and tweaking it to tighten it up, to make sure you eliminate gaps in communication and access when it's not legal or necessary. So that's very important. So we do ask that, since all principals have been trained, we did ask them to share this with you, and I understand that that may not have been shared to date. So I did send out similar information today so that all staff have that information that you can share with families. And we also received the New Jersey Step-by-Step Family Preparedness Plan that was included in that. That's a good resource for families so they have information. It's lengthy, but I think included in all of that is some level of comfort about how do you move forward in times like these. This policy requires that we follow the same process. As I said, we won't change the process that we follow since I've been here the last four years. And as I said prior to my time here, this was in place when I came, so we were able to pull it. Tonight, we're just re-adopting it. We have the information that's in it. It's shared with you. Those are the steps that we'll follow. Those are the steps that should have been followed a year ago, two years ago, eight years ago, 10 years ago. Always following steps to keep children safe. My message to parents is that we will continue to keep your children safe when they're with us. We will follow all legal, all factual processes to do so. And when or if we need to make a decision to engage you about your child, we will continue to follow that process also by reaching out to you. We work for the Trenton Board of Education. We will respond to the Board of Education about how we contact parents. So it's our intent to always contact parents when there's a need regarding an issue about your child. So just wanted, and we also, as I said, we trained last week, last Wednesday and last Thursday. We sat in spaces, and I talked about this being heavy, and it was emotional wondering about a child coming down a hallway, having to hand them off to someone they don't know. They may know me or you, the principal. We take that very serious. And we didn't sit on information. It's just that when we give it to you, it's fact. So the information you read from me, the superintendent, you can use anywhere. I stand by it. And we want to help you be able to navigate questions, requests at the door, how to say no. We've talked with our staff, and we don't promote this in public about when it's appropriate to activate a safety protocol if you don't have enough information. And we're hoping we don't end up in those situations. But all of our principals, all of our vice principals, every supervisor, every director should know what they might do, might, in any instance. And I say might because we might write 22 things down, and 24, 23, 24, and 25 happen. So you have to be prepared for the unknown when you're in a building. What we expect is that any official coming to our building will adhere to the policies outlined in our district. If not, we have a duty to protect students from anyone interfering with the orderly operation of a school or the educational progress for any student. So I want you to know that we have spent time, and I sit on this side, so I've spent the last two months thinking about planning for the what-ifs, and I think I talked about that at this board meeting, and we're here. And so we had plenty of information to share with principals. We took them through scenarios. What about this? And the one thing that was really striking was emotion plays a huge part in this. And I bet you're all thinking the same thing. This is deeply emotional for all of us. And so when you find yourself in these situations and you're wondering what to do, that's emotion. And I always asked the question, does emotion matter when you're making these decisions? And the answer was, you need to check your emotion, read the documents, comply with what the law says and the policy says, and execute appropriately. That doesn't mean we won't cry at night if we end up in those scenarios. You're not human if you don't. But you can call. We have an outline to all of our principals, who to contact. They know who to contact first. They know who to contact second, but contact someone. And we have a structure by which we plan to be at your locations if needed at any point. So we want the district officials, our teachers and our staff, and our community to know that we take this responsibility serious. When changes happen in our community, we'll always take them serious. We don't talk about it. We put the plans in place. We meet about it. We plan, and we plan our action. We don't telegraph what we'll do because we don't talk about safety protocols in public. It's not wise to do that. We want people to know we're prepared as best we can, and we'll be there to support you if you need us. So thank you all for your support. I want to thank our principals, and all of our teachers and our parents who've reached out to me to talk about sending their child to school, the anxiety that they have sending their children to school. And we ask that you send your child to school. We're going to open our buildings like we do. We're going to follow our procedures. We're going to educate as much as we can and as hard as we can, and try to show as much love as we possibly can in Trenton Public Schools. We spent some time this week. Just wanted to plug our student government associations at Capital City High School and Trenton High School this week. We did get together with them. Our district team and many of our school teams are involved in 4DX leadership training. It's just high-level leadership training through Franklin Covey. And one of my goals as the superintendent is to add student voice to my work. I want to hear from students. We often hear from each other, even in the tug-of-war about what to get done in district. But it was an opportunity for students to train with the trainer here at the district office. And we have another opportunity in February on the 28th for them to actually train with us about how to represent their constituents, collect information, and bring it to the people that serve them. So we're really excited about that. And I want to give our principals and the two representative, Ms. Bancoli and Ms. Feliciano, who joined those students on that day last week. And then the only other thing is we have a presentation, not other thing, important thing. We have a presentation this evening, our comprehensive annual financial report from Mr. Dave Gannon, partner of PKF O'Connor Davies LLP, will share our financial audit this evening. Thank you.
And just one footnote to the superintendent's comments. This policy was the first reading in February 27th of 2017, adopted March 27th of 2017. And at that time, our past president, Mr. Jeanne Buie, was the past president at the time. So this goes back to 2017. As the superintendent alluded to, we're re-adopting our position on this policy for immigration. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see everybody. First, you know, the audit process is about a nine-week process. So, you know, what I always like to make sure I note right up front, we really appreciate all the effort from the district's employees. That partnership and that hard work, you know, all throughout those weeks of getting the audit done, really makes it, enable us to be able to issue our report and file it within the statutory guidelines set forth by the state. You know, during those nine weeks, you know, we request a lot of information. So it's a significant amount of more work than normally they would have to incur. And what I would say is that we always receive really excellent cooperation and very professional. And of course, you know, Mr. Earl and Ms. Howard, you know, really provide a really good tone at the top as far as letting the employees know that the audit process is important. So I think that permeates through the whole process to enable that partnership and cooperation all throughout. And although we spend so much of our time with the business office, it is important to note that our audit touches all departments within the district, whether it's special services, student services, transportation, the individual schools. The audit's heavy on compliance, so there's, all those departments kind of fall within the audit process in order for us to get the work done. Point of note, the objectives of the audit. The objective of our audit is to perform a financial statement audit, issuing an opinion on the financial statements. Often when you hear audit, there's multiple few points of what the audit means. You know, there's a forensic audit, an operational audit, a performance audit. All those have different scopes and meanings. So ours is a financial statement audit dictated by state statute. We audit the financial statements to make sure the district is following all the appropriate accounting practices and procedures. And then as far as, you know, because of the level of funding received by federal and state agencies, we're also required to perform an audit in accordance with the Single Audit Act. And those are grant-specific type audits. We also report internal controls in accordance with government auditing standards. That's not that we issued an opinion on internal controls. It's just that we perform test of controls and compliance all throughout the district. And if we note any exceptions, especially ones that are material weaknesses or standard deficiencies, we note those in writing to management and the board. We also audit in accordance with certain standards. As auditors, we're required to follow standards of our audit procedures, those prescribed by the ASCPA. That's considered auditing standards, don't accept in the United States of America, government auditing standards, as well as the federal uniform guidance and OMB 1508 by the state for those federal and state single audits. As far as the results of the 2024 audit, we issued an unmodified opinion on the district's financial statements. Again, we found that they follow all those required standards. We found that the financial records are in excellent condition. You know, information that we request to support balances, to support transactions, the district has no issues in providing that information to us. So any different transaction that we ask for support for, the district has had no issue providing that information to us. The district, as I will note on the next slide, is in, you know, strong financial position. We continue to file the audit in accordance with the statutory deadline. This year was January 15th. That's been a moving target over the last number of years. This year was January 15th, that's been a moving target over the last number of years, but its past year was January 15th. And as you know, the district continues to get strong QSEC scores. Further, as far as the financial position goes, the general fund fund balance of the district was 104 million point seven at the end of the year, and that was an increase from 79.2 million dollars of the prior year. However, it's really important to understand the different composition of the elements of fund balance. 11.2 million dollars were encumbrances, so those were orders placed for either goods or services at the end of the year that just hadn't been provided yet. Those orders then roll into the next budget, the budget 2025 budget that we're in, and they become part of that budget. 42 and a half million dollars was considered a funding source for the 25 budget that we're in now, so that was a prior year excess surplus. So that's now funding this year's budget. 11.2 million dollars was restricted for maintenance reserve. 17.8 million dollars was restricted for capital reserve. Over the last couple of years, the Board of Education has passed resolutions to put certain funds aside for capital maintenance purposes. 7 million dollars is considered unrestricted, so the state dictates a maximum of 2% of your operating budget allowed to be set aside as unrestricted for other types of emergencies. And 15 million dollars was considered excess surplus from the prior year, so everything over 2% minus any specific balances for designation. Again, important to realize that the 15 million dollars, so that would go towards the 26 budget, but it's important to realize that in this year's budget was 42 and a half million dollars, this upcoming year will be 15, so there's almost a $30 million gap there. So it's important to understand that. So some takeaways from the financial position, you know, best practices that you're never budgeting your excess surplus for recurring type expenditures. And what I would note that in your 25 budget, almost 33 million dollars was designated towards facility upgrades, so that was a good use of that one-time type fund balance, kind of helps close the gap between years on the decrease for that. It's also important to note that, you know, your charter school aid is, can be inconsistent. This past year was 55.3 million dollars. If you look at it over the last six years, you can see the growth, it's increased almost 20 million dollars. And then in the 25 budget, it's budgeted for 70 million dollars. So, you know, there's a significant amount of your budget resources, your state aid are going towards the charter schools, obviously. And it's also important to remember, sometimes when you look at the financial statements, the state aid amount may appear different than what, you know, gets presented in the budget. That's because in the financial statements, there's certain amounts that are reflected that are on behalf payments from the state. So the state reimburses the district for social security of employees. It pays on behalf pensions and on behalf retirement medical. So there's roughly 52.6 million dollars of state aid that gets reflected in the audit that's different than what gets actually part of your budget that you have control And the special revenue fund, the early trial had had a carryover of 4.2 million dollars, which was a slight increase from the prior year of 3.9. Your food service fund balance increased to 6.6 million dollars. Again, the food service fund continues to be self-sufficient and doesn't require any board contributions. There is a maximum amount that the state looks at as far as your food service net position goes, and the district has exceeded that over the last number of years, mostly because, again, you know, when you have a district that's providing free lunch to all students, as well as the reimbursement rates during COVID were extremely increased. A lot of districts throughout the state had the same issue, where the net position of a food service fund has increased greatly. So the State Department of Agriculture looks at that very closely, and just requires the district to kind of double down their efforts in making sure that they're investing into the food service program, whether that's ensuring that, you know, the better food served, or whether there's equipment purchase that could be, you know, upgrading the facilities. So with that, you know, the district was 4.8 million dollars over that maximum amount that the state likes to look at, but 2.3 million dollars was actually, an equipment was ordered over the summer in the fiscal year 25 to help try to invest in the program, bring down that balance. Lastly, you know, results of our internal control testing, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, results of our single audit procedure over the federal major, federal and state programs, unmodified opinion on compliance, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Again, if you remember last year, there was a pretty significant finding as it relates to the state aid cluster, corrective action has taken place for this, during this audit period, so that finding was corrected, no issues going forward. And then as far as the audit management, there was no other items that we required, that we noted that require corrective action. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Hey, Dave, thanks for the report. I do have a question. Maybe it's not a question, but could you help clarify for folks who aren't, who don't have the financial aptitude for budgets of this significance? What does that excess surplus mean? If you look at 42 million a year ago, going down to 15 million, what's the impact and how does the district look to you as to be able to manage that gap? Like, what do we do right, or what do we do wrong for that matter?
Yeah, so the impact would be is that if you thought you had 42 million dollars in one year and you expanded programs, expanded employment, that would require recurring appropriations going forward, chances are that 42 million dollars would not repeat. And then you'd have staff programs that you started that would not have, not be able to recur over another operating year, creating a budget shortfall. So it's really important to really manage that amount and understand how much may repeat versus how much not. And then to really look at either programs that are very specific that could be targeted for a year to provide those and implement them, look at items for upgrading facilities, whether it's a maintenance perspective or an actual hard construction perspective, and invest in that way. Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
All right, that's all good? Everybody's good? All right. We now have committee chair reports, and I'll start out with governance. I just wanted to let board members know that on the governance committee, the way we restructured it was the president and vice president and the two past presidents on that committee, because you have strong leadership there with the two past presidents, the vice president and the president, as the four members on that governance committee. And we will be sharing out, I'll chair that committee for a time now, and we will certainly share out all the discussion points with the entire board. This past week, we did communicate out with board members as a team. Addie Lane shared information, I shared information, Denise Johnson shared information, that the entire board was aware of what's happening at this meeting tonight around our immigration, in terms of what we're going to do around immigration. And so I want to make the board aware of that in terms of how the governance committee is structured as we move forward in this year 2025. We did also have a conversation around committee chairperson reports. Many of the board members who are currently chairs of those committees remain chairs of those committees, and I reached out to each one of those chairpersons to confirm that they would continue to be chairs of those committees. And I just wanted to share that committee, those committees out right now. Facilities Chair, Jeanne Weakland, with Sasa and Larry as committee members. Operations, of course, Gene Bowie, Addie Lane and Jeanne Weakland as committee members. Teaching and learning, that's one of the, one of the policy names that we did change, requesting the change in our bylaws to teaching and learning. We felt that that would be a better appropriate name. I did communicate that and share that with the chair of that committee to get agreement and buy-in. Addie Davis-Lane is the chair of teaching and learning, Gene Bowie, Yolanda Lopez on that committee. Human Resources Chair, Austin Edwards, Jeanne Bowie and Jeanne Weakland on that particular committee. Facing School Support Chair, Larry Trailer, Denise Johnson and Austin Edwards on that committee. A grievance chair is Austin Edwards, Gene Bowie, Yolanda Lopez on that committee. Governance, your truly chair, Gerald Trueheart, Denise Johnson, Yolanda Lopez, and Addie Davis-Lane on the governance committee. And then Policy Chair, Vice President, Denise Johnson, with Yolanda Lopez and Larry Trailer on the policy committee. And our negotiations chair is Yolanda Lopez. So that kind of rounds out our committee assignments for this current year, 2025. It is a draft, please, on this one of the board tonight as a, for approval, but certainly if you have any questions or adjustments that you see fit, please, please let the governance committee know, anyone, any member of the governance committee, you can let know any changes that need to be made in terms of the board committee assignments. One of the things that we also discussed was extending the dates for not only our board meetings, which is a board-only document, but our chair, our committee meetings through December of 2025 to coincide with the reorganization meeting that comes up in January. So those are a few changes that were discussed in the governance committee and also shared out with the committee, and I wanted to make that note again at the meeting today about the change, some of the small minor things that we're updating in terms of board meeting schedules through December, as well as committee meetings through the month of December. Also, we discussed in governance, our presentation schedule, tonight's presentation was statute truly required for our audit, which is, was a great, a great presentation by Dave Gannon, great job, Jane Howard and your team. When I give Jane your team, I see Sean here tonight, other members of your team here tonight, thanks so much for your continued hard work that you're doing to maintain our district's financial health and strength. Please continue to do that good work as expected, and I know you love the work and want to do a great job. So thank you again. Thanks so much to your team, Jane, and the superintendent, of course, of leadership of our district as CEO. So that schedule was for tonight. In February, we're going to have our ethics presentation by our school boards, Freeman, our school board's representative, as well as the self-evaluation we're going to have at that particular meeting in the, in February. And so we're looking forward, and let you know, we're looking forward to having that meeting in February with Mary Ann Freeman. She's going to do the self-evaluation, she's also going to do ethics, and that keeps us aligned with all of our requirements for our master board certification and stay on task, following in the footsteps of our past board president, Yolanda Lopez. Thank you so much for getting that work done and getting that work started, and we will continue that work that we need to do to stay a master board and stay trained and stay on top of things. So thank you so much in that area. The other thing we talked about was also school facility walkthroughs. I know that Jeanne Weakland is going to share about that and her comments in terms of from her board chair comments. We also discussed a board retreat in January of 2026 and also in August of 2025, so that's more of a planning stage retreat. Rest in the planning stages in terms of a retreat, all this information will be shared with the entire board after this meeting, so everybody has all the information that they need to make plans. Also, we want to, we're going to be starting our superintendent evaluation later this year in the, in the spring season, so that process will start sometime in April, wrapping up in March, and then through the end of the year, the end of the fiscal year. So those are some of the things that we discussed and continue to discuss in terms of planning in our governance committee. There's so many more things that I could discuss and share, but we'll, I'll leave that for next month. And we want to also let you know that please reach out to any of the committee board chairs or committee members for any questions that you might have about the district in terms of those particular committees. So we'll now move on to our, our policy committee with our vice president, followed by operations and finance, followed by teaching and learning, then human resource, facilities, and then finally facing school support. Thank you, Denise. Denise Johnson, our vice president.
Thank you so much. I want to thank you first, Gerald, for asking that I chair this committee. I thoroughly enjoy being part of this committee and looking at how we can review and revise our policy, so thank you so much. We are, the policy committee is working tirelessly to ensure that our policies are accurate, updated, reviewed, and approved. We are meeting twice a month. Initially, we're meeting twice a month, just so that we can make sure that these policies are accurate. The last time we met was January 16th. And we are, we have up for second reading policies in the 2000 series. For the first reading, we have policies for the 3000 series and 4000 series. And then also for the first reading, we have our bylaws, 0155 is the number. And I just want to make one, just one more comment. I just want to thank everyone, thank the committee, I want to thank the board members as we continue to review, update, and approve our district policies. We know it is a lot of reading that we're all, you know, and I see you, brother Gene, yeah, so it is a lot of reading, but we just want to make sure that these policies accurately reflect what we're doing in the district. So I just want to thank all of you for all that you're doing.
I guess I'm next, right? Okay, so we met this week, and before I even give my update, I just want to commend the policy committee, because that's a lot of work. I mean, it's a lot of reading when we have to prepare for this board meeting, right? That's my Sunday chore. But the policy committee, you do a lot of work, so appreciate y'all. We reviewed the transfers, the security report, treasurer's report, staff travel, and the list of bills. This list of bills, 61,744,853 for two bill lists, 12, 13, 24, and 115, 2025. I would like to just commend the school leaders as they manage transfers. And just for folks who don't understand what that means is, when we, when you plan out a budget, you allocate funds to go in certain areas. The proof of a good job is that you have minimal transfers. In other words, you need to move money to other buckets to get the work done. And so I really want to commend the school leaders for doing an exceptional job as it relates to that, because year over year, we keep seeing improvement. So, so well done. Thanks to you and your team, Superintendent. And then we spent a lot of time during our meeting reviewing the audit that Dave presented, and I called out that excess surplus, because when you think of a half a billion dollar budget, folks think that that's like money that could be done, whatever it's done with it, and that's not the reality. And, and it's really important that when you have surplus, that you don't invest that surplus in salaries or people because it's not sustainable. That drives you to the point where if your budget goes down or that surplus decreases, you can't sustain those positions. So, so I think everybody ought to understand what helps drive us to maintain. And then lastly, I'd like to acknowledge the donations. It's really important to, to say thank you to people who support our children. And so first, we have Mantua Community Church, Classical Oregon, valued at $5,000 to visual and performing arts, Horizon Blue Cross, Blue Shield of New Jersey, Coalition, Affinity Group, diapers, baby food, diaper bags, valued at $5,000, Trenton Central High School, Parent Linking Program, Cross Community Incorporated, $100 for the ninth grade academy, Project Red, hygiene items, baby items, undergarments, and other miscellaneous items valued 200. Project Red hygiene items, baby items, undergarments and other miscellaneous items valued $250 to family and community engagement. And the City of Trenton Health and Human Services clothes, gloves, hats and coats valued at $250 to family and community engagement.
Good evening. The facilities committee met last Tuesday, the 21st, and this is what we discussed. The facilities and infrastructure update, junior one project that's ongoing, the project remains underway with the contractor's change order currently under review by both the district and New Jersey Schools Insurance Group. The review pertains to the removal of an underground storage tank that was discovered on site and the project is scheduled, the tank removal is scheduled for completion in March of 2025. Reserve and capital maintenance projects, the Ziegler Building, the contractor plans to mobilize by the end of January with asbestos abatement to be completed prior to the demolition of the building. The project is expected to conclude by the end of summer 2025. The YMCA building, after ongoing discussion with the owner's realtor and the, the district has decided to withdraw its purchase offer, this decision stems from the building's worsening condition, minimal stabilization efforts by the owner and rising renovation costs. It just was not wise to pursue the project. Emergency maintenance projects, the maintenance and custodial teams have demonstrated excellent response times. They effectively cleared and salted all district schools, administrative buildings and surrounding areas during the recent snowstorm, ensuring the safety across parking lots, entrances at exit sidewalks and pathways. That's it for project updates. The one thing I did want to bring forward is we will be starting facility tours monthly with the superintendent and board members, if you would like to be in attendance to let the superintendent know, we'd like to have a board member, at least one there every month, to tour the facilities and see project status and what's going on in each of the buildings. Thank you.
All right, so first of all, I definitely want to thank board president for selecting me again for the position of HR chair, especially appreciate this committee because it allows me to give a lot of the great news that we're doing in our district. Specifically, I want to point to the board's attention, our new hiring section. We have accounted, it's about 30 new hires that are coming into the district, right? And a lot of this stems from, you know, ongoing efforts, right, that the district is doing. So salute to you superintendent, salute to the HR team. I know that there was a hiring fair that happened recently to reach people in the community and get them into the district. This is something that you guys continually do throughout the year, and you know, the results speak for themselves, right? In these, this hiring pool for this month, we have jobs ranging from custodians to bus drivers, paraprofessionals, music, math, ESL teachers, like we're getting the gambit of people into the district. And a lot of these positions, like, you know, range in different pay, like these are good paying jobs. You know, some of them start at 21 an hour, other ones go up to $39 an hour, all right? Salaries ranging from 40K and I think we have one that's topping off at 95K, right? Like these are a lot of positions that we have, like good jobs in the district, and we just keep asking people to apply. And I also want to point out, right, you know, not just, not just coming into the district, but our retirements, right? I counted it up and we have with everyone retiring this year, over 277 years of service to our district, right? And doing the math, on average of them, of the 13 people that are retiring, they averaged about 21 years of service. So people are coming into the district, people are trying to stay in the district. We have great opportunities for people to give back to our kids and take care of your families at the same time. So really enjoy being able to report on some of the great work HR and the district is doing. So thanks.
Okay. I want to thank the board president for nominating me to chair the face committee. The face committee met on January the 14th, and we discussed our Healing Heart Series, which is helping parents and supporting the whole development of the child, providing them a space to, you know, talk about strategies and learn techniques to be, you know, more effective in the home and make sure that we're practicing our school values of, and our, you know, around the development of the whole child in school and out of school. We also discussed the Attendance Matters Campaign billboard campaign. So as you will see on, through social media and through the billboards across the city, the district is really committed to increasing student daily attendance and reducing chronic absences. And these billboards are constant reminders to encourage people to come to school. We want you here. This is a safe space and you know, your education matters and you matter. So please be on the lookout for those and share them, share our posts around the billboard campaign and the apps and encouraging students to come to school with everyone you know. We also discussed, I had a chance to attend the urban school board meeting on January 10th, and we had Robert Kim, who is the director of the Education Law Center, come and speak about some of the current civil rights challenges with, with education, especially one, some concerning urban school districts. And the big focus that they had was on making sure that we're protecting or they're monitoring student civil rights regardless of what intersection of identity that they're exist in. And one of the things we was talking about is what services can we provide in district around educating, you know, parents and community members around their rights. There was also conversation around making sure that, you know, continuing program services around housing insecurity and stability and making sure parents know their, and community members know their resources within the district around that. And that was our report, so thank you.
I'm sorry, was this the comment section?
No.
Okay.
Not yet. We're going into old business right now, response to public participation. Thank you all, thank you all the onboard chairs for your, for your reports out to the rest of the board members and to our community that's here with us today in our board meeting, our public meeting. In terms of our, our old business, we have some board concerns back in December. Paul Batea, grandparent of Monument Student, was concerned about the lockdowns and not being able to have access to the schools during a lockdown drill. And to Paul, appreciate you coming and sharing your heart with us, but one of the ingredients to that procedure is that no one gets into the building. That's why it's called a lockdown. So no one from the public, other than officials, police officers, people who are officially on duty for that particular lockdown drill are the only people who can enter the building for, for lockdown. So no public entry to the school district buildings during a lockdown drill. So that's the response to that. We have to follow our procedures and practices around lockdowns. It's very important to the safety of our students and the safety of our community. So I appreciate Paul Batea as a grandparent of Monument Student, expressing his, his concerns about not having entry to the building at that particular time. That concludes all of our responses to concerns during the December 25th board meeting. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is public participation. The Trenton Public School District welcomes the attendance and comments from all members of the public at its meetings. This public comment period is your time to be heard on any school or school district issue that a member of the public may feel is of concern to the residents of the school district. Each person who has signed up for comment will have five minutes. You'll be notified within five minutes, you're up. You cannot yield your time to another person. When is your time to speak? Please address all of your comments to the board president. Please conduct yourself in respectful courteous manner. For anyone whose comments or actions are to harass, intimidate or threaten the safety of any person, will be provided with a warning or immediately end your comment time also. If you use curse, use vulgar language or make personal attacks, we will provide you with a warning or end your comment time. Comments that adhere to these guidelines will not be interrupted. If you have any questions, please ask your questions during the five minute comment period. After the public comment period is closed, the board superintendent or designated will address your concerns or questions to it, to the extent provided by the law. We also ask the members of the public not interrupt the speaker during their public comment time. Our first community member, citizen to come and to communicate with us is Raymond Collins. Is Raymond Collins here? Mr. Collins, how are you? Yes, yes, please, come right to the mic.
Press the button with the little, on the right. If you press it, the red light will come on. Oh, he's got it. They want to make sure we can hear.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to speak to the children or somebody else could about soil depletion. Yeah, it's a, you know, it's a major issue, obviously, so I just want to make the children aware or have them write a letter to the, you know, president or somebody like that about the issue. Is that a possibility? Huh? Soil depletion. Yeah, you guys aren't aware of that? It's a, it's a real thing. It's a major happening. So since the children are our future, you know, I'd like to make them aware of what's happening to the soil since we all need it, right? So, yeah.
So one of the comments, okay. We'll have, we'll have somebody to communicate with you.
Huh?
We'll have somebody to communicate with you directly.
Okay.
Our next, next person for public, public participation is Dawn Kunkel. Is Dawn here tonight? Dawn Kunkel, special ed teacher? Okay. Jackie Sullivan, Trenton Central High teacher?
Good evening, board members. Thank you very much for having me this evening. My name is Jack Sullivan. I'm a social studies teacher at Trenton Central High School. I'm also a union rep with TEA and a Trenton resident. I live right over by Unity Park on Hamilton Avenue. And in all honesty, I had some very different remarks prepared this evening before superintendent, you sent out your advisory on our district's policy about immigration enforcement. Because I was very alarmed over the past week, seeing the fear in my students and, and in the community more broadly. I mean, I had students telling me that they were desperately seeking an immigration attorney and, and trying to scrounge together money to try to make sure that their families can stay here. I had others say that their parents feared to send them to school, and that simply isn't something that we can have. So I really want to thank you, Superintendent Earl and, and the rest of the board and everyone else involved in being proactive about this issue, for being clear about this procedure and being clear that when immigration enforcement or if immigration enforcement is to come to the doors of one of our buildings, that we're prepared and that we have the right policies in place to, to keep our students safe as much as we possibly can. I want to also reiterate Ms. Alessia Montano's consideration that this needs to be clearly communicated to families. Like I said, I've talked to students who say that their families are fearful, and I think that needs to be a big priority, making sure that our families know that their students are safe and that we care immensely about protecting them and their children in this community. So again, thank you for being proactive on this issue. I expect that we will continue to stay proactive and stay abreast as further changes come in the coming weeks, months, and who knows how long of further changes in, in immigration enforcement. But thank you so much for being clear about this policy and, and communicating that to us.
Sorry, John Forte, TEA.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Earl, Board of Education. I'll be brief because I think Jack summarized it pretty well, but the issue of immigration enforcement in our schools is already affecting our students' learning, right? We've already seen students who are bothered and, you know, you go up and ask them like, hey, you know, you okay? And, you know, they're concerned about family members being deported. So we were really glad to see the district step up, take a proactive stance, and I, you know, I think, you know, the way that Chicago Public Schools approached it last week, we were hoping for that kind of policy and we, you know, I think that what was put out today was excellent and we're, we look forward to seeing the policy be implemented and, you know, our students be, feel safe to learn in the classroom. So thank you.
Mr. Lethy Duncan, TEA?
All right, good evening, board members and President Trueheart, congratulations, Superintendent Earl and community members. I did have part of my speech about what Jack and John spoke about, so I will just say that I did forward something to Mr. Earl and Mr. Earl that we received that we could possibly hand out to our families to let them know if ICE does approach them at the school building or in the community. What I did find out, since I emailed you both, is that if we print it out and distribute it, it should be on red letter, red paper, because that's called their red card. So TEA is willing to do whatever we need to do to assist the district into assisting our families and our students because a lot of our teachers received a bunch of phone calls and texts from scared parents and students alike ever since January 20. calls and texts from scared parents and students alike ever since January 20th. All right, I do have a few complaints, and I'm going to say them as clearly as I can. In the sped department, the BD program is being dismantled. I am not opposed to the BD program being dismantled if we do not have the resources necessary to assist those students with those issues. My issue is I was never called or emailed or reached out to by the Director of Special Education about the closing of the BD program and the moving of teachers. It was only when I reached out to him that he said, oh, I thought your members told you. I have to do a better job next time. After speaking to him and discussing some movements, I explained to him that this is not how this works. One of our members even said, when they were brought in to be told about the movement, the comment was made, do not go run to Tlethia in the union in a complaint. The director did deny that. I don't have proof that he said it. I just want to put on record that he should not be saying that if he did say what they alleged he said, because that is anti-union animus. And this is not the relationship or the working relationship that Mr. Earl has put into place. On the board agenda tonight of the BD program being dismantled, only the teachers at Holland and one teacher at PJ Hill is listed. The teachers at Grant are not listed on the board agenda. On the board agenda, the teacher at Holland that is being moved is being moved into the incorrect placement based on the discussion that was had and had the discussion happened before the Director of Sped made the movements. We would not have this issue at hand. I did speak to him on Friday. He did tell me it would be corrected at this board meeting. It is not corrected. I'm not sure if it's his fault or HR's fault, but it's someone's fault that the grant teachers are not on the agenda and that the Holland teacher is in the wrong placement. Next, I want to move on to issues with HR. We get a ton of calls from our members about HR not being responsive to emails, phone calls, et cetera. I am telling my members to come in person, because I do know we get busy and people are swamped with emails. I am not complaining about the entire department, but what I'm saying is if we are a customer service or, uh, organization and we are looking to fill all those vacancies, Austin, the first line of communication or non-communication that they don't get from the HR is not a good look on us. I have a member who is out on the leave. I have not had a chance to investigate it, but I'm going to put it on record. His parent came in to tender his resignation and he said someone at the desk asked him, was he too much of a coward to come and turn in his resignation himself? The parent did not know the name of the individual who supposedly said it. The parent said that Ms. Ali heard the comment and interjected and said, I know the situation, and then helped the parent of our staff member. And the parent was satisfied with Ms. Ali's customer service, but whoever he talked to prior to that, he wanted to make a complaint because the person made the comment about his son. Finally, I just want to say TEA has been working very hard to be collaborative, cooperative, and to handle situations before they get to the point where we have to come and speak at a board meeting, right? Because this is not what we want to do. HR is in need of some serious help. When I'm talking to someone in HR that is in a leadership position and that person does not know there's a difference between state FMLA and federal FMLA, and we've been having an issue for several months and I asked for documentation and nobody can present the documentation, it's unfortunate that I have to be like, ooh, I'm going to go tell your daddy, like Mr. Earl, and make a complaint. That's not what I want to do. I want to try to confront these issues before we get to this place so that we can continue operating in a collaborative, communicative place and move forward like we have been. Thank you.
All right, thank you everyone for their, for their board member, for the public, public participation. We'll now move on to board member comments.
I have a few comments, as usual. So first of all, I really want to thank my colleagues in the district for reaffirming 5111A. You know, I look out tonight into an audience where I usually see a lot of Latino families attending these meetings, whether documented or undocumented, and I don't see one. Clearly, our families are afraid. They're afraid. And by, by virtue of being afraid, their children are afraid. So I think that any way that we can get this message to our families, and certainly thank you to the two, our, our two teachers to, that are seeing what they're seeing and that they can assure, reassure our students that the school is and should be a place of safety for them. You can't drive that home enough and have them share that with their families. The sooner we do that, the better, because we are a district that already has problems with attendance. And the last thing we want is for these families not to send their children to school. So I also have to applaud our district for having this on the book for eight years, because we are in a repeat performance here. So I'm just so grateful for this. In addition, given the climate that we're in, I'm also grateful that we've finally seen the light about the YWCA program, a building. You know, I've been vocal about this from day one. And as convenient as, as it was for our, for our Capital City High School, it, you know, it just would have been a money pit and an albatross. Especially now where, you know, we are hearing at the federal level that they are considering disbanding the Department of Education, that we get a significant amount of funding from us and so many urban districts across this country. So we have a wonderful treasurer who does a great job, Jane, in watching all our pennies. And certainly, you know, we will, this money that we won't have to spend, I know will be looked at, looked at and will be able to, you know, definitely help us in the future. There's, there's other locations that I know that we can focus on. So th, this is actually a good thing. Three things I just wanted to get an update at some point, Superintendent, was something I brought up last time at our meeting was about the cell phones in schools. And fortuitously, our governor spoke out on that like a month later about how important that would be to be, have some sort of removal or policy regarding cell phones in the schools, especially, you know, given what we've heard about social media affecting our kids and them having access at lunchtime or whatever. I think it's really important that we examine that. The other thing was, I had asked you a while ago about, and I'm sure you're having discussions about this, but if you could brief us on AI. I did, I did see something on the agenda about a program we're funding using drones and AI and wonderful, but I just wonder at the administrative level, what kind of discussions, because it's moving fast and furious. And, you know, I have concerns for our teachers too, that have to grade papers and, you know, all those sorts of things. Our, our students are incredibly gifted and, you know, smarter than many of us probably in this room, so. And then finally, just an update on how our program evaluations are going. I know we've been working on that for a while, so at some point, if you could share that, doesn't have to be tonight, but at some point, if you could share information on those things, that would be great. Thank you.
I have a question slash comment for both Superintendent and Council. It is, it is my understanding that ICE must inform local law enforcement and the mayor when they are coming into town. And that in turn, the mayor or law, law enforcement are to inform council members. My question is, is that correct, one? And two, if it is, if there's any way that we can have the director also inform our superintendent of such a possibility? And that he would keep, of course, the board informed? If you could confirm that? Also, Superintendent, I know that you have already begun doing the work that is in this resolution, and I just wanted to highlight that for our members in the audience and whoever may be seeing it via YouTube, that they know that work has already begun. We're not just waiting to approve this reaffirming of this resolution. Another thing is, Sasa was a, I think is a great recommendation that we translate the resolution into the different languages and that we give a summary. And so I would love to see that done as soon as possible. And I was wondering if maybe, Superintendent, we could speak with TEA and if they could create their own resolution so that they can go out together to our parents and that they know that both, both the board and the teachers are fully vested in educating their children and seeing the best for them. So that is all for now.
So being one of those, being one of those folks that have been a real advocate for AI, since I've been engaged with it probably almost two years now, right? I was, in going through the policies, having a policy 2365, right? Use of artificial intelligence, what I found very interesting, it, it touched, touches every aspect of the work. It touches how the teachers use it, how the children use it, and it aligns with what the Department of Education has stipulated. So, so I like to commend, that was, that was a long read. That was a long read. But, but to Addie's point, it's an ever-evolving thing. So, so we will have to come up with some kind of review quarterly or whatever, because it changes so quickly. But I was, like, really pleased to see that, that that was in there. And then Gerald reminded us that when 45, when 47 was 45, is when we first went through this work. Right? And so now, through these executive orders, he's back with a vengeance. And so it's really good to see that the Superintendent and his team are taking a strong stance on this. And I just hope it doesn't come to that, where we, where we have to engage and our children at the schools and our, our leaders and teachers have to engage with this stuff, right? So thank you so much for being proactive on this, on this topic. Thanks. That's it.
Jean, I just wanted to let you know, I remember that you had been advocating for CUMETTA a while back. Well, through the 4C's Workforce Development Committee, we are using them for the, the students at Capital City who are participating with 4C. So it's a start, yeah.
I just wanted to say, echoing a lot of sentiment that's been going around tonight, how proud I am of my fellow board members and the district as a whole for really standing and supporting our immigrant communities. Literally not just tonight with the policy that we're re-adopting, not, you know, that's, that's been around for years, but also frankly, on a daily basis, right? I remember recently, I was just in conversation with some statewide partners, this Salvation Social Justice, right? You know, the job pays me, right? But I was talking with them and we were talking about, it's just like, yeah, you know, we come to school board meetings, right? And regardless, right, we always have the headsets in the back, right? Where you can just tune in and understand everything that's going on. And everybody was just like, wait, y'all do that in Trenton? Like that, like, we haven't heard of that. And I was just like, wow, like, we're really leading the way and making sure that we communicate effectively with the community and the students and the families that we serve. So definitely proud of everything that we do and, and really just proud of the work. Just happy to be sitting with you guys and really affecting our Trenton community positively.
Hey, Austin, could you just briefly talk about the Howard University Autumn Spring Break? Just a little bit?
Well, since you asked. If you don't know about the illustrious Howard University, the premier historically black college and university, HBCU down in DC. Want me to say it again? All right. A proud alumni, yeah, proud alumni myself. And what they have is a, it's called ASB or Alternative Spring Break Program, right? They've been doing it for, I think this year is going to mark the, mark the 30th year of ASB. And it's a program where the students volunteer their time, where they could be going out to, you know, Cabo and, you know, Miami and, you know, wherever else around the world for full debauchery. But instead, they give their service and their time and their commitment to different communities and different areas of need. They reached out to us to partner this March to come to Trenton, also work in our district, work in our schools and focus specifically on youth and education. So I think that'll be coming up hopefully next month, the partnership with Howard University for the ASB program. And it's going to be a blast. I know I did it about three times between Howard undergrad and Howard Law. I went to Chicago, we worked on gun violence. Went to New Orleans and we were doing immigrant rights down there. Like, it's, it's really an amazing program and it really helps define these students and shapes them for the rest of their lives. So it's a great program. I'm, I'm excited to have it up here. Next month, I might have my just ignorantly big Howard sweatshirt on, right, just to prove it. But yeah, I'm glad that we're partnering with that.
You know, no.
And we do, we do have a few, yeah, there's a lot of people in the district that are Howard University graduates, working across the board, teachers, I see you, Sheryl, all right, HR. Yeah, yeah. And, and a lot of people in just administrative positions, a lot of people, teachers, right, across the board. There's a lot of Howard already ingrained in the district. So this is a natural fit and I'm very excited for it.
I have one more thing, and hopefully this is the last thing. I just want to say thank you to Yvette Reyes for the work you've done to help us with all this technology that we now have. You have, there's something here now, Gerald, that I absolutely love and I didn't realize it. So you're going to have to use this now as president. You can see who will, the names of the people who want to speak, so you can just tell whose turn it is. You don't have it on your screen? See, I'm speaking, right? My name is there. I love this. Thank you. And we're really sad to see you go. Very sad. Thank you for all you did for us.
Thank you for all you did for us.
I just want to say thank you for being on top of things with this immigration nightmare. I couldn't, can't imagine what these parents are going to, through. And this is just another cause of trauma for these children that have already been through enough. So thank you for being proactive. I also want to thank Talithia and TEA for working so hard to collaborate and make this, you know, a smooth working relationship. I know there's problems and everything, but you guys are really putting in a lot of effort and it's really showing. And I think it shows on our end. And, you know, board meetings aren't like what they used to be, you know? I remember sitting there at my first board meeting in the audience before I was sworn in and I was like, oh my God, what have I gotten myself into? So thank you. Thank you all. And we look forward to working together in the future.
Could I make one more, more comment since Austin was shameless about Howard? I also want to be a little bit shameless. I'm on, on the board of an organization called LALDEF. It's an immigration organization here in Trenton and this is for benefit of the teachers and the public. What they're seeing is a lot of parents coming in and desperately applying for passports for their children. LALDEF can help them do that. So if you have any families that you hear, whatever you can, they're on Clinton Avenue, you can refer them there and they can be helped to fill out applications for their children. And they do other things as well, but that's what they're seeing.
Sasa, what's the full name? Cause that's, that's an acronym, right?
American Legal Aid and Education Fund, LALDEF. Yeah.
Any additional board comments at this time? Larry, anyone else? You good?
No, I just agree with everything my colleague said. Also, also FASF is coming up. So, you know, I know, I know that that was a big thing that we talked about the last couple of months and making sure that students know that, you know, that there's a waiver option for students who may not necessarily want to complete it and that we're making sure that, you know, this process is not, you know, going into a tracking system so that students feel protected.
I know there were like 150 families in the first session. I'm not sure the second session at Trenton High last week, right?
Yeah. So we had a second session and I think we have, I know we have another one. I think there are multiple sessions. And in between that, if families and students need individual support, I think the team is structured in that way. And we tried to add support so that families can be supported in their native language also. So Ms. Grant's worked with the team to make sure we get the right people and kind of spare no expenses to make sure people understand that process.
Just one more thing because I did forget this. I've never spoken so much, right? Excuse me. I, I have heard several concerns from some members of our community because of the application for preschool. It is asking for the parent's birth place. And so after, you know, looking up some things, I know it is, it is a state requirement. Is there any way that we can, one, either inform the parents, it's just a state thing? Two, can we be proactive in asking that be changed? And three, my concern is that if I were to ask the Department of Education for records, that they'd be able to get that. So that's another concern that we need to look into.
So they're not kept private? Do you know Superintendent, that information is not kept private?
It should be.
That information on where their parents are from would not be kept private if they fill it in?
Well, depends. I mean, I think James can help me answer this, but information is no different than any legal request you make. You must have a reason and legal authority to have that information. Otherwise, we would not share it and I don't think the state would be allowed. So here, if you ask for information, unless you have something that's signed by a judge that says, or something legal that says you're allowed to have it, we just will not give it to you. And we wouldn't do that in any case. So as long, while it's in district, now state documents or state documents, I think they are also bound by some of the same procedures and laws that we are. So we don't anticipate information being shared that shouldn't be for non-legal reasons. And that's important to know. And we'll certainly ask the questions about the application and in any way that we can ask for that information or be flexible, we will. And in some cases, we can't. But we can also share the concern that people have. And I think the state's been proactive also in sending out information to us about how to help families protect themselves. So I think they would be open to that question. And I'm a member, executive member of a group that can get fairly good access to answers like that. So I'll get on that tomorrow.
The other group which we should be cognizant of are members of the LGBTQ community, the older students. That's a great preoccupation in terms of identify, you know, them identifying themselves and are transgendered that could somehow come down and hurt them.
Yep. So we, I talked earlier in my comments about how, how heavy this issue is and we were talking about immigration. But before Warren, we talked about LGBTQIA issues initially and how that may come to us sooner than even an ICE agent being at our doors and how do we protect our young people? And we talked about what laws they have protections with now and that we, same thing, we're going to enforce the same things that we've always enforced, keep our young people safe and do our research. You have to do work because things will come to us and you don't know the facts. And I know there's a need for a quick response often, but I go underground. I get the information so I can be, so I can be smart. I mean, I can be accurate so when people get it from us, they can feel confident that it's coming out. We seek legal advice. We seek state advice. We seek other, we see what other districts are putting out. We try to make sure that when our people get information from us, they can trust it. And so we'll do that same thing for students. Every student, however you identify, wherever you come from, we want you to know that you can be, feel good about being here as best we can protect you. You know, we say we'll protect you inside, things happen inside our buildings now that we're not proud of. But we are proud to educate the, the young people here and serve the families. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Everybody, everybody's good? Good at the order? Everyone's good? Now see, I promised the Superintendent, we were joking in the back before we came out. I preside sometimes in Lawrence as Assistant BA. I chime in for Tom when he's, when he's on vacation and I'm known for having short meetings. So I challenged Superintendent today, we'd be out here by eight. So I think we're, I think we might, might make it. We just might, we just might make it to be out by eight. So we're gonna, we're gonna move on to board discussion, national consent agenda. Board discussion, national consent agenda? All right. Need a special motion for fifty-one, one, fifty-one, one A. The policy fifty-one, one A on immigration. Can someone on our board?
So moved.
I, I move that we would...
Wait a minute, hold up one second. General Counsel?
Yeah, I just want to be clear. Our policy generally requires two readings.
To me, that's right.
This motion is being called for specifically a motion to move in past fifty-one, eleven A on one reading.
Yes, thank you.
What did we move before?
That wasn't, that was a discussion.
You voted, you voted to amend the agenda to include...
Yeah. Thank you, General Counsel. Can I have a motion?
So I move, I move that we approve the resolution for the affirmation of, and I missed it here.
Five, one, one, one A.
Five, one, one, one A on the first reading.
All right.
Second.
Properly moving second it. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Gerald Trueheart.
Yes.
Denise Johnson.
Yes.
Jean Bouie.
Yes.
Addie Daniels Lane.
Yes.
Austin Edwards.
Yes.
Yolanda Lopez.
Yes.
Sasa Montanya.
C.
Larry Trailer.
Yes.
Jeannie Wiegler.
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right. Thank you, General Counsel. Now we can move on to board discussion, national consent agenda. Can I have a motion to move the board consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second it. Roll call.
Gerald Trueheart.
Yes.
Denise Johnson.
I, I just have to abstain from approval of the transportation costs for DCF, but everything else, I say yes.
Jean Bouie. Addie Daniels Lane.
Yes.
Austin Edwards.
Yes.
Yolanda Lopez.
Yes.
Sasa Montanya.
Yes.
Larry Trailer.
Yes.
Jeannie Wiegler.
I abstain from all things Grant School and yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, is there any new business on, anyone have any new business? No new, seeing no new business? We move right into executive session. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, codified as NJSA ten four dash six, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting under certain circumstances. And whereas Trenton Board of Education is of the opinion that such circumstances persist, presently exist, indicated as follows. Any material considered confidential by federal law, state statute, or court rule. Any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation to which the board is or may become a party to. Any matter falling within our attorney-client privilege to the extent that confidentiality is required to preserve the attorney-client relationship and allow the attorney to exercise his or her ethical duty as a lawyer. Matters captioned settlement in a matter of Dr. Pacilla Dawson versus Trenton Board of Education. Now there being it resolved that the body of Trenton Board of Education, County of Mercer, State of New Jersey, that an executive session will be held on January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five for the statutorily permissible purposes indicated in this resolution. Be it further resolved that action may be taken by the board when it reconvenes an open session. Be it finally resolved that the minutes of executive session with regard, with regard to this above subject matter shall be disclosed to the public at a later date and to the extent that the same is not prejudicial to the interests of the parties involved, no longer adverse to the public interest, or does not endanger any individual's rights to privacy. Motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Do you have a second? Properly moving second it. Roll call.
Gerald Trueheart.
Yes.
Denise Johnson.
Yes.
Jean Bouie.
Yes.
Addie Daniels Lane.
Yes.
Austin Edwards.
Yes.
Yolanda Lopez.
Yes.
Sasa Montanya.
Yes.
Larry Trailer.
Yes.
Jeannie Wiegler.
Yes.
Move to executive session.
We're now convening to executive session. Thank you all.
Yolanda and Janice.
The Trenton Board of Education meeting is back in public session. I need a motion to approve the settlement agreement.
I move that we approve the settlement in the matter of P.D. versus Trenton Board of Education.
Second.
Properly moved and second at roll call.
Gerald Truheart, Janice Johnson.
Yes.
Gene Bowie.
Yes.
Eddie Daniels Lane.
Yes.
Austin Edwards.
Yes.
Yolanda Lopez.
Yes.
Sasa Montanya.
Yes.
Larry Trailer.
Yes.
Jeanie Weakland.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Properly moved and second, all in favor?